We're good to go? Then we'll go ahead and open this meeting. I'll call the order, the September 25th Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak during public hearing or citizen's comment, there's sign-up sheets in the back. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda as our motion to adopt is presented.
Can I motion to remove B for further discussion?
So we'll vote on it as presented without number B. All those in favor? Or is any other discussion? If not, is there a second or a motion to?
So moved.
Take it as we're presenting it without B? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Now we'll discuss item B. Ms. Anderson?
So we received a letter from Mr. Dr. Lowell Simmons for the Library Board of Trustees, for the Waynesboro Public Library Board of Trustees. And he just wanted us to, wanted to make us aware of the application that was put in, I think, two years ago, if I'm correct, regarding the implementation of a sign at the Waynesboro Public Library. And unfortunately, we found out last week that, you know, we were wanting to change our city code and that would, and that in a way would affect that application that's still open, still active. And, you know, I feel like it would be nice to hear from the community and residents and what their feelings are with the implementation of electronics signs in the residential areas.
Well, we went through this process when we put the ordinance up to have it changed and we had advertised that in the community and we had a public hearing meeting on it, correct?
That's correct.
And we voted to bring it to this point. And at that point, it was voted on to, as an ordinance for tonight. So I think tonight is time for us to either have the discussion. Anything else that other council people would like to add? Or, Mr. Hamp, you got something you want to add?
Sure. So I think for the benefit of the council folks, that it is true that this, the library made application for an electronic sign about two years ago and the original application did not conform in terms of size with the zoning ordinance. And I was involved in the conversation with the trustees and the staff there. And the trustees and presumably the staff went back and investigated the ability to bring a sign that would conform with the size standards back to the building official. And they were able to do that. And along the way, I communicated with the Board of Trustees and with staff my understanding and appreciation for the motivation behind wanting the sign, but at the same time, misgivings or reluctance that I had as steward for public property about installing an electronic sign at that location. And again, the conversation was very respectful and the trustees were, appear and remain committed to their position of the benefit of having a sign. My objections are based on the fact that there has been regularly expressed concern about pedestrian safety in the area and more specifically pedestrian safety for patrons who are walking to the library. And it was, it's my personal belief and professional belief that having an electronic sign at that location doesn't promote pedestrian safety or at least isn't consistent with some improvements that we've made in the area to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to improve pedestrian safety. Secondly, the library is immediately adjacent to the historic Tree Street area and on a corridor that while not entirely residential in nature, is fairly residential in nature up to that point. And it's, again, in my responsibility, I guess, I suppose my judgment counts for something and I felt like that an electronic sign wasn't in keeping with the corridor. And so I have not been entirely supportive of their application. And that would, that would remain my position. And it's one of the reasons why we included as staff the prohibition for electronic signs in residential districts largely because of, not because of the library's request, but the library's request prompted, at least in my mind and among staff members, us to examine the appropriateness of electronic signs in residential areas. And so that's where we stand. I think that was the recommendation. You'll recall from last meeting that the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation that electronic signs be allowed by conditional use permit in residential areas. Staff's observation to that recommendation was that we did not endorse it and asked that if the council landed in that position, that it would be necessary to communicate to staff some standard by which we would evaluate and bring forward recommendations for allowing by conditional use on electronic sign in a residential area. So that's the, sort of the 40,000-foot level, how we come to this point.
Well, and I have to agree with Mr. Hamp. One of the goals we're working towards is expanding the greenway, which will come across Wayne Avenue and hopefully at some date will extend out to Ridgeview Park. So we're going to even have more pedestrian traffic right at that intersection. And when, you know, we first got contacted about it from the people from the library and then me and Mr. Hamp had a meeting with Dr. Lemmons and we discussed, safety was the number one issue on me. It's not so much the sign itself, but when we're going to have more foot traffic to the greenway, people going to the Y, people trying to just enjoy the neighborhood down through our, I think with a lot of the drivers that I watch out here now in the community, they need to spend more time and be attentive to driving and watching the road than to reading signs and communications while they're trying to drive down the road. And if you're not supposed to be texting and reading messages, I don't know why you would want people looking off and taking their attention away from driving to read a message to give them a date of something that's going on. So I'm totally against the sign and that position. And I know we've had discussions about other ways or a sign at a different location and other avenues that we could go after to try to promote all the activities that's going on in the library. And we want more business for our library, but I think we have to take safety firsthand. So anybody else want to chime in?
I'm just, I guess, confused or curious why the initial application for this was two years ago? And then that, you know, as Mr. Hamp has explained, there was some issues about the size or something of the proposed sign that didn't meet that aspect of the zoning. But I mean, why has it taken this long to, I'm just curious?
Well, in all candor, I suppose it's taken this long because I didn't communicate decisively my opposition to the sign. And they went back to the drawing board and fashioned in a proposal that met the sign, the, met the, it didn't pass muster on the first attempt because it was too large. And so the library staff went back to a sign vendor and said, can we have an electronic sign of this, of size that meets the ordinance? And when they came back, the conversation became more pointed and more direct to my opposition to that form of media. And I suppose that if I had been more clear in my position and more, had my position been more formed at the time, I could have saved the trustees some trouble.
Unfortunately, I had a, I wasn't able to talk with the board until after our last meeting and sat down, talked with them to see if, you know, they, if it was something they wanted to pursue. And, you know, of course, they're still adamant about it and after two years, you know, wanting to move forward and hopefully still see it happen. And, you know, with the application, of course, still being open, I don't know how the change to the policy will affect, you know, their application since it's, you know, still open and whether or not that'll be grandfathered in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Acknowledging, one, that the trustees and the friends have made considerable investment in the library building. It's still a public building. They don't really have the authority or standing to make an application. That an application has to be made by a property owner. So it'd have to come from either this potty or Mr. Hamp.
I think I would echo, I mean, I think two years is a very, very long time. Just I think it's sort of, if the answer was going to be no at the beginning, it should have been no at the beginning. And, because now it seems like we're creating a rule to circumvent something that was, maybe should have been discussed a long time ago. I guess I would, I mean, there are standards for, you know, with these, these changeable message signs exist in lots of corridors all over the country, let alone Waynesboro. And I would be curious as to the relationship between accident frequency and placement, installation of these things. Because it's one thing to say, well, it's a pedestrian, it creates a less desirable and unsafe condition. It's one thing to say that, another thing to demonstrate it through anything other than just a perception. So I would be curious about that. The second would be the, where you have transitional areas. I mean, the truth is, is that where the library is situated, for about two blocks, it's kind of a transitional area into, into a residential and then pops back into a commercial area. So there's that. The second is that the speed limit, or the, another observation would be that the speed limit used to be 35 a couple of years ago and it's gotten dropped to 25. I have folks that have complained to me and we've, we've installed some additional lighting over by, on 14th Street going into the library. And then I've also installed the pedestrian placard that's in the middle of Wayne Avenue.
That was ran over.
That's run over repeatedly, as is. And so I think, I think the concern about pedestrian safety, there is already an issue with pedestrian safety out there. And I don't see a whole lot that we've done in terms of, of being more aggressive perhaps with it. Or I know there's been conversations in the past about putting on-street parking to create some friction in front of the, in front of the library, all the way down to the YMCA, so the YMCA could have additional parking and create more of a, because you come off of that bridge, it feels like you should continue to go 35 miles an hour. It's just, just how it feels.
You're not supposed to be doing 35 when you come off the bridge.
Well, I know, but, but, but the road was designed, the road was designed for, for that speed. And again, we've, we, you open it up to two lanes there. So I guess I would, I would be interested in, if appropriate, to, to go back table the decision this evening and ask staff to come back with, with some more quantifiable justification for why we would deny it. And then, and then, again, as, you know, as trustees, while I appreciate the full breadth of, of city code and the city right, being a city-owned building, we also, you can't, you can't say trustees go out there and do a great job of administering, facilitating our operations at the library and say, accept this. You know, your voice doesn't matter there.
I wouldn't imply that at all. I'm just saying that at some point, as a matter of process, it would be up to either the council or Mr. Hamp to make the application. And so as we looked at it, one of the reasons that this issue arrived at, you know, with these zoning amendments is the code is really unclear as to what is the guidance.
Right.
So whether they can even make an application if these signs are allowed or not in that district.
I've thought of other locations, I mean, after, after this all kind of came up of going, oh, this would be great to have because there are definitely sections in the city where they could go in and it's really not desirable to have those things in there.
And it's, I mean, there, there are some that exist in commercial corridors now. So I think there's maybe a couple of ways to go about this. One would be to pull this issue out of the zoning ordinance amendment generally. And Ms. Michelson might look to you for some, some guidance there, but to go ahead and pass the remainder of the ordinance and then to deal with this more, in more depth or more explicitly. Once the council resolves the, the ordinance issue, well, then it's, it would be up to either the council or Mr. Hamp then to make application on behalf of the trustees. I think the trustees, as I understand it, or the friends, were willing to pay for the sign. It wasn't, it wasn't as if they were asking the city to pay for the sign. But as you, as you look at any of our applications, there's a requirement that the property owner or somebody who has power of attorney for the property owner actually makes the application.
Yeah. I think the only case in this, in this point is that they made application two years ago and we didn't tell them they didn't have the authority to make an application. So if, and I haven't seen that, that letter, and so I think, kind of owe it to the trustees to at least forego this element of the, of the zoning change. Can't do that. And then come back to it at another meeting.
She's shaking her head. So what do we need to do?
Now, we've advertised ordinance in accordance with our charter and our city code and it's, the ordinance is a whole. So we can't just pluck out little pieces of it and then pass some of it. It's advertised as is and if we make changes to it, we have to re-advertise as that's what the changes we're passing. So if we table it, we would have to re-advertise the ordinance either with other changes to the sign issue or take that out and deal with that, you know, later down the road and re-advertise, but, you know, per the code, we've got to re, we have to advertise the ordinance two times for two successive weeks. So it may put a little bit of a delay into the.
Could you pause at this point and not, not act on it as a body? And then would it, could you offer amendment at this point so that you're not starting over, but rather you're seeing if you can clean up in the process?
But it's still an ordinance. So we have to follow the advertising for ordinances, which is two successive weeks.
That's right. But I guess what I'm saying is, could you suspend a final vote and resolve, and seek resolution within the, could you amend it at this point?
Any amending of the ordinance is a new ordinance and we have to advertise.
Okay.
I mean, we could table it and if it stays as is, if, if city council feels that the sign provisions within that ordinance is, is the route they want to go based on staff recommendations, then it could come up on the second, you know, as is and we wouldn't have to re-advertise and do all that. But if any changes to that ordinance would render it, in my opinion, a new ordinance, which would have to go through the same processes. Could the application be dealt with as a separate issue where we go about researching, you know, as far as the negative impacts and whatnot? Go ahead and pass it. I mean, not to, I mean, it would still be great for us to look at the situation, I mean, because it will affect, you know, any business within a residential area, but to just see it as an application that was, you know, open before we pass the code.
Because I've always understood that we could do less, we can't do more with something that's been introduced.
I'm sorry, Mr. Short.
I've always understood that you could do less, you could pass less, but you can't pass more than what's been advertised. So if we were to remove one element, then of one, you know, strike a line in the final decision, post-public advertising, post-public hearing, that that was allowed, but we just couldn't add anything else?
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but in my opinion, if we strike out a whole portion of that, that we've, I mean, I guess we've changed the ordinance.
To something less.
Yeah, but we've advertised it, so I see, I see your point.
Yeah. Because otherwise, if we, if we were to introduce an ordinance post-public comment, how thoughtful are we being to responding to public comment if we don't make adjustments prior to action? That's kind of where it was.
Just go ahead and ask your questions, friend.
The, what I'd like to do, it sounded like we're kind of debating this, like it could be problems. I want to make sure that the majority of council wants to do that. I don't know that we've really had an opinion yet. I think the library is a Class 1 act. I know people in Crozay, Stan, Charlottesville are coming to our library. We have many programs. We also have, the library has many programs they offer on our TV station runs around the clock on Channel 7. So they have a way to advertise even better than a lot of places do. I agree that it could cause problems. I don't want to change the nature of the residential area. I don't want to have, the next thing you know, there're going to be signs, the Y's going to have signs. I, again, we just put walkways for pedestrian safety up and now I don't want to take away, like Mayor said, from drivers' attentions looking at signs. So I'm not for even putting them whole, but I think if you have a majority who wants to look at that.
Maybe the thing to do is just to table the whole thing until we figure out whether or not we can extract or remove. I mean, no.
What I'm hearing though is, from our legal counsel, is if we start striking or doing anything else, we're going to change the, the ordinance, it's going to have to be re-advertised.
And, Mr. Short, that's my opinion, just off the top of my head, but I agree with Mr. Short, there may, may be an avenue of just redaction that won't affect, you know, re-advertising, but I cannot say that with any affirmative confidence, right, as we sit here.
So if we tabled the entire ordinance this evening, that would allow us some time to, one, resolve some issues, two, get some additional clarification and then, and then bring it forward at the next meeting. That sounds like a game plan.
What are we holding up with the other part of the ordinances?
There's at least one issue that's important to potential developer. I think as Mr. Judee pointed out, there's a, a prospect that we'd like to install a quick-change oil shop in an area that they can't do it now because the ordinance wouldn't allow garage bays facing streets. So the ordinance proposed that we wouldn't allow that on designated corridor, in corridor overlay areas. So that's, Mr. Judee, maybe you can help me if I'm, if there are any others that are more immediate. I think we had some issues with the description of microbreweries. We have a microbrewery in town now. If the, help me out here, if the Virginia Metal Crafters are able to rezone their property, then does that make the existing microbrewery a non-conforming use in the district?
Come up to the podium, please.
Mr. Shaw's correct. The Valvoline, the oil change, sorry, the quick oil change facility is, is the main one that we'd be holding up. The brewery would become non-conforming under the rezoning. The text amendment did not pass now. That doesn't have any direct negative impact on their operations or anything, so that's, that's not an immediate consequence, but the oil change thing would be more immediate.
While she's thinking, if, if we passed this ordinance, would that forbid any type of that sign to be put on the, the west side of the building?
No, sir. The ordinance applies only to electronic media signs.
I have an idea.
I got an idea, too.
If we, if we pass the ordinance tonight and then ask staff to bring an amendment that would, that would, that would retroactively undo the electronic messaging sign in residential areas to conform to an agreeable solution by, you know, for all parties or whatever the best, the city's best interest. But it gives us, so basically you pass, pass it tonight, which includes the consideration to pass it this evening, you, you pass the entire ordinance and then ask staff at the next meeting to bring forward the things that we've discussed about, that's for transitional areas and so on for residential signs. And then, and then entertain an amendment to the ordinance that we would pass this evening to retroactively undo what we would do. Because I certainly don't want to hold up all the other things. I mean, I've only been on council for about a year, but I, I also tend to think that we can, we can do things less than what we've advertised, we just can't do more.
We've certainly used that rule with taxation or fees and things of that nature where we've dialed it back but not increased. And I would just throw out, too, that the, I believe the Planning Commission's recommendation was to allow the electronic signs in residential areas by conditional use permit. And so that may be, it gives you an opportunity to, to discuss whether safety is an issue real or perceived, whether proximity to historic districts, whether the view from homes, you know.
The rub on that is that we didn't introduce that, we didn't introduce that as an ordinance for consideration.
No, I'm just saying that it's a, that would be another option if you were to pass this ordinance. I don't know that if there's a limitation on the time before you could bring an amendment back other than advertising.
And one thing I've learned from sitting here, nothing's set in concrete once we vote on it. Because we can always come back and readjust or have a new vote back on it, too.
My position is we go ahead and vote on this thing and then we want to entertain some changes later on, which would, I assume would require advertisement.
Correct.
And go through a public hearing and process again, but.
In the meantime, we could maybe set up a meeting, you know, advertise, go down to the library as a group.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea. And I think we owe it to them.
Have, have more conversation on it. How would that suit with everybody?
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but then I think there's some question as to, are you doing this specifically for the library? And do you as a body want to make that application? You want to take that action to be able to do that? But that it would then apply to any use in, in the residential districts. And it really affects schools and churches primarily would be the users of these kinds of signs. So Berkeley Glen and Westwood, I mean, a lot of the schools, Kate Collins, you know, most of the elementary schools and middle school are in residential districts, as are many churches.
Well, at this point, why don't we go ahead and I'll ask if there's a motion to go ahead and a motion to pass Section B of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Mark, second by Mr. Short. Any other discussion?
I would just ask that, that staff could help us out here a little bit with the next, at the, maybe the next meeting and subsequent week and have some conversations as the mayor's.
All right. Anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Thank you. Item three is matters from council members. Anybody have anything you'd like to present tonight?
I'll just point out that next Monday is the first Monday in our I'll just point out that next Monday is the first Monday in October. Feel free to come and speak your mind, tell me anything that's fallen to you, any questions you have on something we have or haven't voted on, and we'll talk about it. And so you can come to Panera Bread from eight to nine on Monday in the morning, or you can come to the library from seven to eight in the evening. So be happy to talk with you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I know there's a couple people up here that got a little exercise this weekend in reference to the Chili's and Blues that was held Saturday night. Mr. Vice Mayor Short, you got some comments you'd like to add to the event or the attendance of it, or...
What an amazing night, and, you know, thank every, all of our, all the sponsors for the event and staff, just outstanding in helping out and facilitating it, you know, for the, for the not-for-profit organization. And just what a great night for Waynesboro. I mean, it was, we literally had, you know, close to about a couple thousand people in our downtown, and it was astonishing to see the number of people who were just enjoying themselves, and our hotels were, from what I hear, filled, and just a great event for the city. So appreciate all the volunteers, too, coming out, and I couldn't do it without all of them, so.
Fantastic night. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Item four is, upon request of the DuPont Company, hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a long-term easement for access and use of city-owned property at 900 Essex Avenue. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, at your September 11th meeting, you approved a temporary access and construction easement for DuPont Company. You're aware that the purpose of that easement is to remediate mercury in the banks of the South River on city-owned property. In order to fully meet the obligations of ongoing repair and long-term maintenance of the remediated areas, DuPont requires a long-term easement from the city, and city councils ask to conduct a public hearing on that request and introduce an ordinance granting that long-term easement to DuPont for ongoing repair and maintenance of the remediated bank areas. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right. I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
And I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Sub move.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Ordinance is introduced this evening will be considered at the next regular business meeting. Item 4B is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending City Code Section 2-102, Dispositions of Public Property Granting Franchises. Ms. Mifflison, you explain this one.
I'm sorry?
Can you explain the proposed amendment?
The current version of the City Code is out of compliance with the requirements of the Virginia Code, the mirror of Virginia Code, in two aspects. One, the granting, leasing, selling of any city property for longer than five years must be passed by a supermajority. Three-fourths is the requirement on the Virginia Code. The Virginia Code, and under the Dillon Rule, localities can increase what the requirements under the Virginia Code or the Constitution are, but they can't go under it. So our current version states three-fifths, which would, you know, in percentages, be 60% versus the 75% requirement. So we've recommended amending that section to be, fall into compliance with the Virginia State Code, and in fact, we're just mirroring the language in the Virginia State Code. The second section that it's a little out of compliance in the other direction is that under the Virginia Constitution and the Virginia Code, long-term easements or franchises, there's no such thing as a permanent. It cannot go beyond 40 years, and that's the requirement in the Constitution and in the Virginia Code. The Waynesboro City Code reflects 30 years, which, again, is okay, because you can be more restrictive. But we recommend that, again, we amend our City Code to be in line with the Virginia Constitution and the Virginia Code, just to be consistent.
I guess the question I would have, though, is that if we had three-quarters, how does that math work with, I mean, shouldn't we just go with four-fifths?
And I understand that, you know, if you say four-fifths, but that's an 80%. So say the Virginia Code changes, and they change it to 50%, then you're still at 80%. And that's, you know, a much more restrictive requirement, and maybe the city council, you know, doesn't want to bind itself. It doesn't matter necessarily how many people you have on city council, and you may increase. You know, you may have six members or seven members, you know, in the future. So usually, we recommend that you mirror the language in the Virginia Code, so that you're not always looking at, you know, are we doing it, you know? So you will have to pass it by four-fifths, in this instance, to have, to be able to have a supermajority. But we don't recommend actually putting that restrictive of a requirement in, because things may change over the years, and city council may change over the years.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there, we hereby open the public hearing? Hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Sub move.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 5A and B are presentations from Greg Hitchens, the Director of Economic Development, regarding tourism initiatives and trends and Grow Waynesboro program. Mr. Hitchens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Assistant Director of Economic Development, Tourism, Ms. Crainer, sincere apologies for not being here tonight. She is under the weather. Tried to make it, but just didn't, so stuck with me. Mr. Shaw, can I ask you to turn me?
Sure.
So, on the tourism update, we have two parts. First is trends, and the second is some new initiatives. As we look at the trends, please remember that we're looking at data over multiple years. Some of the data is hard to compare, such as 800 billion to 35 million, so the graphs are on two separate accesses. And what we're looking at is the left-to-right trends, not the up-and-down comparisons to that data. So the first one I wanted to point out is economic impact of tourism. And you may remember, within the last couple of weeks, Virginia Tourism Corporation announced the 2016 numbers. And we wanted to look at how that, how we were trending over time, and how we were comparing to both the United States and Virginia. So this goes from 2008 on the left to 2016 on the right. The blue bars are U.S. travel, domestic travel in the U.S., expenditures. And the U.S. Travel Association uses a formula based on transportation, auto-transportation, air-transportation, lodging, food, and retail sales. They don't tell us exactly how they do that, but they use all those numbers to come up with this data. And they indicated that in the United States, domestic travel was $836 billion industry in 2016. Compared that to the state, which is the, kind of the pinkish line, is 24 billion, and Waynesboro at $35 million. The important thing for us is that the trends are all kind of sort of going in the same direction. So we're not heading south when everyone else is heading north, or vice versa. So overall, our tourism industry is holding steady with the state of Virginia and the United States. How do we compare on visitors? Keeping in mind that Waynesboro is the only place in the world that Blue Ridge Parkway, Shenandoah National Park, and the Appalachian Trail intersect a few miles outside of town. So those are very good barometers for us to measure. So the yellow line at the bottom, again, we're comparing left to right, not up and down, is visitors to the tourist information center. And so in 2016, we had just over 18,000 visitors to the information center. The next lineup is the Blue Ridge Parkway. Eighty-two thousand visitors traveled the Parkway. Shenandoah National Park, the Rockfish Gap entrance, had 1.4 million people come out or in of that entrance, compared to the overall Shenandoah National Park of 15 million visitors. Again, obviously, a decline from 2000 to 2008, and it's slowly picking back up, but over the last three years, all three indices are all headed in the right direction, all three headed up. So again, we're consistent with some of our travel partners in the area. On the lodging supply and occupancy, again, this is an industry-supplied data. Not all lodging establishments need to participate in this, and in fact, out of the 13 in Waynesboro, only seven do. But you can see a jump in number of rooms, the supply between 2006 and 2009, and a corresponding drop in occupancy, that only makes sense, but a pretty steady increase in occupancy rates since then. So in 2016, we're right about 69% occupied of the rooms we have, or in-stock rooms in lodging. That is, again, the participating hotels and bed and breakfasts within the city limits. On the meals and lodging tax, so this is revenue to the city. Again, some pretty substantial increases since 1996. Bottom line, the yellow line, is the lodging tax, so that generated $734,000 of revenue to the city. And on the meals, it's just over $4 million. Now, we recognize that not all the meals tax is tourism, but certainly a component of it is. And just for reference, I marked on the year 2000 and the year 2011, where we had increases to those tax rates. So a couple of new initiatives. As I mentioned before, Waynesboro is the only place where certain roads intersect, so we become a natural hub for exploring the Shenandoah Valley. We've had, of these first five initiatives, we'll talk more about, each one has its own slide, but I wanted to focus, just talk a little bit of the Tourism Advisory Board. You may remember about six months ago, or nine months ago, we had some outside consultants come in and talk to us about our strategic plan that was nearing its five-year life as we started to prepare for this next five-year plan. One of the things they recommended is a tourism advisory board to help our department gather input as we make major decisions to move forward. We took them up on that advice. We're running that through the EDA, so we have two members of the EDA and eight members of our community that are in some way affected or participate in tourism, be part of that board. We're putting it together now. The first meeting, we hope, is going to be the first part of November, and it, again, allows us an opportunity to bounce ideas off of people in the industry as we try to make decisions on where to market. Public relations is a big piece of what we do, and if we'd been standing here 10 years ago, we would have said we spent all of our money on print advertising. Well, as we know, print advertising has gone away of digital advertising and social media. So we're transitioning some of our marketing funds, most of our marketing funds, away from straight print advertising to those two venues, public relations and social media. And one of the ways we do that is through this one-page profile sheet. So this is a front and back sheet that gives a synopsis of what Waynesboro is all about. This is what Virginia Tourism Corporation uses when they go outside, it's places that we can't market, and we also use it for an initial public relations piece to interested parties. We've producing, we have plans to produce three videos. We produced two on each of our major areas, outdoor recreation, arts and culture, and beer-centric. We'll show you one of those videos right now. is currently in production and will be finished soon. So a couple of our regional initiatives. You may remember from economic development talks is Waynesboro is, can be a small dot on the map. We need to talk and market a bigger dot on the map, and the Shenandoah Valley is one of the most recognized areas in the country. Anytime that we go outside of Virginia to market either tourism or economic development, and we say Shenandoah Valley, oh, yeah, I went on vacation there, or I did this there, I went camping there, or whatever. So we really try to take advantage of that notoriety in all the marketing that we do. The first thing I want to talk about is the Greater Augusta Regional Tourism. It's a partnership between Augusta County, Stanton, and ourselves. That is the Beer Works Trail. We serve, Courtney Crainer serves as the Chair of GART, and we do two things. We produce grants, tourism grants for tourism draws out the market outside the area. So this year, the GART gave out three grants to the Queen City Parter Party that was last weekend, Virginia Food Truck Battle, and the Waynesboro War, which was a couple weekends ago. The biggest focus is the Shenandoah Beer Works Trail. We've received two grants, one of $50,000 and one of $22,000. That was just announced last week, from Virginia Tourism Corporation, to market the Beer Works Trail outside of the region. Beer Works Trail goes from Lexington to Harrisonburg, and we market it a number of different ways. We've won two awards, the Virgo Awards, which is the Virginia Convention and Visitors Bureau Award, and an M-A Award, which is a marketing award, mail order, not mail order, mail, direct mail marketing award. We were speakers at the inaugural Beer Marketing and Tourism Conference about six months ago. And our new program, the program we got the grant for, is a passport program, which will be rolling out here in the next few months, just as it sounds. You get a passport, you get a stamp each time you go to one of the brewers on the Beer Works Trail, and the fulfillment of that is a Beer Works T-shirt. So just an opportunity for visitors to experience all the different beer, microbreweries we have along the trail, get a T-shirt, and then market it some more. Shenandoah Valley Tourism Partnership, again, we're marketing the bigger dot on the maps, we're marketing the valley. We serve on the Marketing and Sales Committee for this. Press event was held about six months ago as well, where we announced the new brand, the new logo. We've had a couple of successes already. Family Travel with Colleen Kelly is a PBS television show that aired about a month ago. It was taped about six months ago, nine months ago, they were in town taping it and aired about a month ago. IPW is an international powwow. It's Brand USA, so it's domestic, domestic U.S. tourism, marketing to the international world. So international folk, international travel professionals come to the United States to learn about different venues that they can advise their clients to come and visit. Farm to Fork Affair, GART did this last year, where we matched up valley producers of food, so part of the Farms to Gold Network, with producers. So we're taking that valley-wide probably in the next year. When we'll produce, we'll have a trade show of sorts that local restaurants and other users of local food can come and taste the local food. And Zuma Radio, it was a Canadian radio station that spent three days at the Iris Inn, broadcasting live each day. They interviewed four Waynesboro businesses, as well as some other from the valley. But each day, you could tune into the Zuma Radio online, and they would say, broadcasting live from Iris Inn in Waynesboro, Virginia. So it got some great publicity into the Canadian market, it's a Toronto market. Can't really tell how many of those people are going to come down here, but it got marketing outside of our area, which is one of the things that we're trying to do. So that concludes our tourism update. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hitchens? No, sir?
To continue on? So Grow Waynesboro, Innovative Entrepreneurship Development Initiative to find, fund, support, and catalyze, catalyze, excuse me, a new generation of downtown locally-owned businesses. This program was designed to elevate our entrepreneurship, to build an ecosystem of entrepreneurship for continued growth within our community, and to create a business climate conducive to... conducive to entrepreneurship and small business. 2016, we initiated this program. You have a copy of this brochure in your packet. We created a website, social media platform to announce the program and market it. I think the important things to look at here, we had three winners out of our 2016 program. We invested grant money of $21,000 in direct grants, in leases, and infrastructure and equipment, and those businesses are still in existence today. They've created seven full-time jobs, and we anticipate they will create another six jobs within the next year. We'll talk a little bit more about the return on investment in a moment, but we wanted to show the baseline that we took the 2017 program and built from. So in 2017, we took those successes and again marketed to produce downtown small business. And you may have noticed signs like this that were in windows around town. We enhanced our website, enhanced our social media application. We created a community environment. And like I mentioned, in 2016, we involved the Waynesboro High School, where they went out and actually interviewed people. What would kind of business would you like to see in downtown Waynesboro? They interviewed entrepreneurs on what they thought they could do, put that all on the website to market the program. So in 2017, we worked with building owners to put these signs up, again, marketed the program through website and social media. We had 28 business ideas submitted to the website. One of the things we learned from our 2016 program to 2017 was training and a business plan was important to the success of those businesses. So in 2017, we required and paid for those people to go to an eight-week business planning class. The training that we put together was a combination of the Small Business Development Center. They have a program called Growth Wheel, and the Stanton Creative Community Fund, eight weeks business planning class. So those 28 people, in order to be considered for a grant at the end, were required to go to all eight weeks of this class and produce a business plan at the end. So not, again, the program is designed to provide competitive startup, small business grants, but not only that, it's training and mentorship for the grantees as well as all participants. We launched a new downtown coworking site at the end of 2016, where entrepreneurs and budding entrepreneurs can go and work free of charge. We're working to create an existing entrepreneurship ecosystem, as I mentioned before. So having the right pieces in place to help small business people get started. By engaging the community websites, we built a comprehensive Grow Waynesboro website. We built a second website that is a step-by-step instructions on how to start a business in Waynesboro, who to contact for what. We're also pleased to report in both 2016 and 2017, our website won Silver Awards from the International Economic Development Council. Elements of this program, marketing, invitation to submit an idea via the website, participated in a business planning class. If you graduate from the business planning class, you have an opportunity to make a pitch, a live pitch at a pitch night to get a grant. And in 2017, we had eight people make pitches, and we gave out four grants totaling $51,000. We've had two businesses open so far. The third one, we hope, is going to open this week, and the fourth one will follow soon after. We've provided training and coaching, again, not only from our training partners, the Small Business Development Center and Stanton Creative Community Fund, but within our office. We've required them to go through QuickBooks training, required them to go through social media marketing training, all of which is paid for out of the grant, in hopes that the entrepreneur spirit within Waynesboro will continue to grow and continue to develop future entrepreneurs. On the funding piece, 2016 program, the total budget was $36,000. We were fortunate to receive a grant of $18,000 from DHCD, Development of Community Development. The remaining part of that money came from department budgets, economic development budgets over two fiscal years, and the EDA contributed some. As you see on your brochure, the return on investment for 2016 was almost three to one. So through our grant, we contributed just over $21,000, and the three businesses contributed $71,000 to make their businesses grow and start. 2017, we also received a grant from DHCD, a different program, bigger grant. The match was one to four, not 50/50. So we had a $75,000 program. We were able to give out $51,000 in grant money and additional roughly $8,000 in training to winners and participants. Return on investment is yet to be seen, but we are anticipating great things to come from that. 2018, we're hoping to run this program again. One of the requirements of a DHCD grant is it has to be something new and progressive. So we've kind of run the course with grants that we can get from DHCD. We are looking for other opportunities to get grants. We're also going to be looking to our community. So beginning next week or the week after, we'll be asking local businesses to contribute to help make this program a success. Our goal is another $75,000 program, where the city through department budgets and the EDA will contribute some, but our community will contribute through sponsorships. And again, hopefully, we'll be have an opportunity to apply for and receive some additional grants. Plan is to announce this. If we get enough grant support, enough community support, to announce this in December, run the eight-week business planning class, basically February to April, pitch night, have businesses start sometime during 2018. We do have some funds available from the 2017 program. We are offering some scholarships to, an eight-week business planning class begins in two weeks. We have enough money to scholarship five people, and we have four participants. So there's no guarantee you have grant money at the end of this for any of these participants, but they're interested enough to go to this eight-week business planning class to produce a business plan to start their business, maybe with grant money and maybe without grant money. And that's my update on small business. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Any questions?
I just had a question, not so much about, I mean, I think these are, very much appreciate the presentation and the updates. I think they're very worthwhile initiatives, and I know everybody down there, just, y'all hustle like crazy, and I really do appreciate all of your work. I do have a couple of questions more broadly about economic development, and I saw that the Go Virginia applications are out there and available, and would be curious about if we could get an update as to if we plan on, if we plan on applying. If so, let information about that, not tonight, hit you up on cold on that. And it'd be great to, maybe not tonight, but to a business visitation program, kind of an update on that. I've attended several meetings, and I've heard these numbers of 80% to 85%. And this 80%, 85% is that your economy can grow by 80% to 85% with internal capitalization. And so if we have, are the businesses that are here now, what's holding them back from expanding? Sort of very, very comp plan, sort of this, I think very timely. I think that would be very interesting to hear from you. And that's really all. I think those two items, that'd be great for future.
I may just, so the statistic is 80% of your growth comes from existing businesses.
Right.
Anything else?
At some point, would it, I don't know whether it'd be appropriate to have one or two of these new business people come and speak, you know, their experience and how they're doing and so forth, council? So we have some idea about, you know, about on the program and firsthand from some of the beneficiaries.
Maybe you could set up a meeting down at your office that we could come walk into.
People look into that, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item six is to receive a report from the Director of Planning, Luke Judee, on various grant opportunities and the city manager's intentions to apply for certain grants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're coming up on a two-year cycle for a number of large transportation grants that we get. People talk about there's grants out there, and it may sound like they're kind of hodgepodge. When it comes to transportation, there are really only a few, you know, truly substantial grants that can actually pay for things big like roads, and we're coming up on some of those. So the applications for these two types of grants are due on November 1st. It's coming up quickly, and it's a two-year cycle, which means our next opportunity to apply for this money is in 2019. So we need to think about this strategically. And there's a lot of information that we need to compile in a very short time, and we'll need a city council endorsement and potentially matching money to be committed from the city. So the first big grant program is the TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program. I'm sorry, give me just a second. I think I might have put the wrong presentation on. I gave this presentation to the Planning Commission, and the situation changed slightly
Is it upstairs?
Never mind. I'll just explain. So for TAP, we have $1 million available for the district over the next two years. This is a 20% match, so we need to put in 20% local money to match the, it's originally federal money. So it funds bicycle and pedestrian improvements, anything that's not a road project, basically. And you need to be able to finish the project within several years. Again, this is federal money, so that makes some of our projects more expensive, and so we have to kind of keep that in mind when we think about which projects are the best projects to fit into these different grant cycles. The project that we'd like to propose pursuing is the East Main Streetscape. Basically, is a possibility of doing pedestrian improvements, sidewalk improvements, and median work, street trees along the East Main Corridor. And we think that it's a timely project, something that would be a good thing to pursue at the moment. Another possibility that was thrown around was doing engineering for the Croze Tunnel Trail. Eventually, staff concluded that this is probably not the best application to make right now. Nelson County is still, does not have a contract to actually complete the tunnel at the top of the mountain. Transportation Alternatives only has $1 million available, and that's a $4 million project, and they don't like to fund things that they can't fund in their entirety. So we're just not at a point, we've got some other possible ideas for where we could go with that project, but we don't feel that right now we're in a good position with TAP. The second type of grant is the Recreational Access Grant. This is a rolling grant. This is not on that two-year cycle. And this provides funds for roads that open up access to recreational areas. As you may be aware from our last council meeting, we have a large recreational area that is in need of a road, and in fact, fits the criteria for this grant almost perfectly. The grant has $250,000 plus a 50/50 match for an additional $100,000. So our road, we could probably only get about $300,000 in that road, I think, but this is definitely a possibility. And we think it's very likely that we will get this grant. We can't say for sure, but it doesn't have a lot of applications because it's very, it funds a very specific type of road, and we happen to have that specific type of road. I'm going to come back to Smart Scale. Revenue sharing is the next large one. This is VDOT funding for construction of new roads and certain types of maintenance outside the Smart Scale process, and it requires a 50% match, which means that it's half local money. You cannot match it with VDOT maintenance money. So this is what we will use for anything that we want to put our own local dollars into. This is largely going to involve kind of meat and potatoes road projects, not too many things that are probably going to be very notable, and they'll mostly come out of Public Works. And so Public Works will soon be delivering you a list of things they'd like to pursue with revenue sharing, but we don't have anything out of planning for it. And then the last one is Smart Scale, and this is just something to be aware of in the future. Smart Scale, the cycle doesn't start until 2018, or 2018, so this is next year. But this is their main transportation funding mechanism. These are very intensive applications. We'll need quite a bit of lead time to prepare them, so we can't be coming up with these ideas, you know, next year, right before the deadline. This is what's currently funding the Southern Corridor. Projects get scored on five metrics: safety, accessibility, congestion relief, environmental protection, economic development. And they get full funding with kind of a six-year timeline and limited funding available per district. We've thrown around possible applications. I wouldn't get too hung up on any of them just yet. Again, some of them have issues that we'll have to look into and resolve, and we'll come back to you at the appropriate time and ask for more guidance in that area. Any questions on any of these grants? All right, this is a, we have, really quickly from the, the only one that we're actually proposing that we'll need a resolution from you all soon is that East Main Streetscaping. We're working off of a set of drawings that were done in 2013 through a Virginia Main Street Grant that would include kind of improvements along that corridor, and we'd have to work with each of the business owners on what they would like to see happen in front of their business and things like that. So.
I would just ask those for the pedestrian-related projects that we maybe consider and maybe talk to Public Works about possibly going at revenue sharing for those, only because the Smart Scale, first year of appropriations, not till the year 2022.
Yeah.
And so, and I think of Tiffany, you know, I don't know, we all heard about Tiffany and Rossar and the need to have a crossing there, and of course, certainly all the folks that are coming here and staying at all those hotels that Mr. Hitchens talked about. It is, it is, it's pretty scary to see some travelers and their kids running across the street to KFC and everything. So it'd be great to see what avenues we might take to accelerate some of those improvements.
I don't believe they have their list nailed down yet, but I think that's on it for them. I think, well, because that, our sidewalk money is, can't come out of VDOT urban maintenance money, and so that's all money that, it's not a large sum, but we've appropriated ourselves. And so that's money that we could use to match rev share. So I think they're talking about potentially doing improvements out there. And as Mr. Short points out, anything that we apply for on Smart Scale, you're talking about six years before you see shovels going in the ground a lot of times. So that's for long-term things that we want to see develop more slowly, not for things you want to ask me about next meeting.
Mr. Short, the Public Works is definitely going to ask council to endorse a resolution for additional sidewalk work. We have one revenue sharing grant now to do sidewalk work in the Lucy Lane area, and then we would look to do another project of kind of similar value in that area. My expectation is that we'll make, we'll try again on the A Street Bridge Crossing that we applied for last year, didn't receive money, but I think we'll make another application for that. And then I'm under the impression now that we can use revenue sharing money for maintenance projects, and we're probably going to talk to council about a rebuild of a couple of the streets that are in worst repair. As you well know, the way that we operate, we actually try to maintain streets through cycles of milling and paving, because once a street deteriorates to a certain standard, it's 10 times as expensive to fix that street as it was just to mill and resurface. But we do have some streets that have fallen into that level of disrepair, and we would ask the council if it'd be your pleasure to match a revenue sharing grant potentially to rebuild some of those types of streets.
Anything else?
Yeah, there. Questions about projects?
Item seven is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $15,000 from Federal Emergency Management Agency Local Emergency Management Program Grant to the General Fund for expenditures to the Department of Emergency Management. Mr. Hamp?
Lady and gentlemen, this is a recurring annual grant that historically we have simply applied to the operation of the Emergency Management Department in the General Fund. So if you have specific questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Some.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. Item 8A is to consider appointments to the Disability and Aging Board for Independence. Mr. Hamp?
So heretofore, and since...
So heretofore, since their establishment, the city's Disability Services Board and its Senior Advocacy Commission had functioned as two separate and distinct bodies, but fulfilled similar general missions, general missions of assessing needs, identifying and recommending solutions for those needs, and advocating for respective populations of either disabled or elderly persons in our community. Over time, participation on those two bodies declined, and the two groups merged informally several years ago, working collaboratively as a unified group. That experience was favorable, and you may recall that the group approached the city council to formally merge the Disability Services Board and the Senior Advocacy Commission into a single board known as the Disability and Aging Board for Independence. City council adopted an ordinance establishing that board in November of 2016. This evening, I have a slate of nine individuals who express interest in serving on that board and who meet the code-established criteria for appointment to the board. The code requires that three individuals represent providers of service to disabled or senior populations. Those three appointment slots do not carry an obligation of residency in the city. Code requires three individuals, all who must be residents of the city, represent disabled residents, and three also who must themselves be residents of the city and represent the senior population in our community. I will give you the list of individuals, Ms. Sasha Duke, Ms. Donna Lee Atkins, Ms. Jacqueline Horton, Ms. Will Shinoa Wells, Ms. Jeanne McCutcheon, Ms. Maxine McKinney, Mr. James Hall, Ms. Ellen Woosley, and Ms. Marie Overstreet. The council is asked to consider appointing those individuals for a term of four years, which will expire September 30th of 2021.
Is there any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to make these appointments as a body?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short, is a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Is any other discussion?
Just a huge thank you for you all working through this, and how fantastic it is to have such a, a great group of volunteers to step up and to serve our, our community. So very much appreciate it.
Anything else? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry five oh. Mr. Hamp, resolution to change the date of our next council meeting?
So the first regular scheduled business meeting for council in October falls on October 9th. That is a state-recognized holiday, and the Code of Virginia prohibits local elected bodies from conducting business on a state holiday, even if the locality does not observe the holiday. Therefore, it's my, I anticipate that there'll be sufficient work for the council to consider, and it would be my recommendation that you move your October 9th meeting to Wednesday, October 11th, and that should be done by resolution.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Hamp? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry five oh. Item 10 is citizens comment, or communications and correspondence, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you. Item 11, citizens comment?
Mr. Bill Kirkendall.
You'll give us your name and address, please, sir.
William Kirkendall, 109 Holland Circle, Waynesboro, Virginia. Good evening, first of all.
Good evening.
I also appreciate the fact that you changed your meeting date from October 9th to October 11th, because that allowed me to celebrate my birthday on October the 9th.
Good. Happy birthday.
I have a question for you. What is the status of the high school renovation project? I have not heard as much as a peep from city council about the project. I hear about the comprehensive plan as being your top priority right now. I hear about dumping approximately $2 million into Sunset Park, which is, by the way, will not bring any, any revenue into the city, except your $80 a person dinner that you had planned. How many of those dinners will it take to pay for renovation of the landfill? It seems to me that the high school renovation, which is described to be world-class by Mr. Short, has been short-changed in the order of priorities. You were told by experts who looked at your comprehensive plan that education slash its buildings slash teacher salaries that are competitive should be a large cornerstone of the plan, yet it seems to have fallen into the uncirculated letter file. A project of that importance and magnitude should be first on your agenda of reports. I don't relish coming here in two or three years and finding us at the same point in time that we are now. I'm pleading for you to put more of a priority on the high school renovation project. Get together with the school board to make it happen as soon as possible. Make all of us proud of you and your world-class renovation project. I really don't expect an answer from this body, but I do think your actions to bring this up to a top priority item will speak volumes to your intent and dedication to see the project completed as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Hamp?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Admissed. Adjourned.